Does everyone want a copy? So tonight, we're going to talk about the ITZ printed out the M1, because I think that's what your comments were last time of comparing those pieces. So who wants a copy? I have the concept they included with the M1 and then the ITZ red line. Greg?
I still don't ever have my red lines on here.
I think they are on there. If you go to...
Yep, it's there.
The height one. Uh, Lyle, do you want one?
Yeah, please.
There's that. Then I'm assuming Brandon will be here if he didn't say he wouldn't be. I feel like we need to have like a pep talk. Everyone feels real down today.
It's hot when it's down.
Yeah, like I just feel like you're quiet, mellow. Lou?
Take one of those pictures.
Oh, did I not give you one? Sorry. Do you, is that the M1? Do you want a copy of the M1?
What I, what I did is I made a copy of just two pieces, the M1. The landscaping.
And the...
And the lighting and the noise.
Do you want the whole one just in case or you're good with this?
No, no, I, that's where I'm going with it.
Okay. Let's, I don't know if we want to start from the top of this. So just some, well, I guess I can talk, just some points in this is, where we got to is, well, let's just start going through it and see what we can do. And then I'll kind of interject what, because some of this is making a middle ground with Marriott Sladeville, between their ordinances and our ordinances and kind of meshing them. So there is some given this that we have to be, that we have to remember. So, do we want to start at the top? Do we want to go right to questions? Lou, I feel like has a lot to say, so if you want to leave.
I'd like to go through, as I understand it, this zone was crafted basically following Sladeville's template, not ours.
Correct, yep.
Okay, which is fine. That's a good beginning point. What I'd like to see us do is say, okay, what about this template do we like? What do we want to add to it based on our own zone sense? This, Sladeville is fine with this because this is their zone. I mean, this came from them. And for the, a lot of it doesn't matter to me. I think the land uses, we have beat that to death. Unless somebody wants to debate, we're still debating those. That's what I'd start with that.
Quite understand is deleted personal services and fitness. I don't know why that needs to be deleted because we allow that in ours.
I thought we came up with a, some terminology we could live with. What was it? We came up with something that we all liked.
Yeah, we got it right here.
I have a question.
Yes.
In our M1, we have an SOB.
What's an SOB again?
Sexual Oriented Business.
Oh, okay. Well, yeah. Yeah, this is an M1. I wouldn't...
No, no. A municipality is required to include it in one zone. We've already done that. So we don't have to do that.
I have another question.
Okay, no, I, believe me, I got beat up on this one. So we've satisfied the law, the letter of the law by having it in our M1. I certainly wouldn't invite it.
I mean, I definitely don't want to see it on this project. I just, it was just a question.
He's, this one right here, the list.
Oh.
Personal Services. We talked about... Okay, that's what it was.
Was it that or was it like...
Personal Care and Fitness Center.
Why is it not typing?
Personal Services can mean all kinds of stuff.
But so can Personal Care. What does Personal Care define this?
Right, I understand why Personal Services and Fitness is...
That one sounds like escort service.
I know, I agree. It doesn't sound, I don't, I don't think Personal Care is any better.
Is Personal Care and Fitness Center.
Is it?
Yeah.
I still think that's very vague.
We went over this a dozen times.
What is, what is it?
Personal Healthcare and Fitness Services. Then you come up with a better one.
Well, I think the intent, is the intent to be like a gym and fitness or something?
Well, if that's it, then let's just leave it. What did you, what's the second half of that say?
Says fitness.
Personal Care and Fitness Center.
Then why not just Fitness Center? Health and Fitness Center. How about that?
That's good.
That's about as, in as soon as they...
No, this is just for the ITZ.
Okay, personal, what do we change it to? Personal? Should it be personal health? No, just health and...
Fitness Center. That's, I like that.
Perfect. Okay, sounds good. Okay, from a use standpoint, are we worried about any of the uses? Obviously, on the flip side, they're okay with it because they made the list.
Use, you mean?
And I'm assuming the developers looked over this list and anything they could foresee putting in the buildings on this list.
Yeah.
So our real object, our only requirement is make sure there's nothing on the list we can't swallow.
Right.
Isn't that pretty much, I don't think it's as important that it's inclusive of everything under the sun.
That's what I'm saying. Is there anything else we have heartburn over? But I mean, the list is fairly consistent of all our zones, you know?
The list in general didn't, indoor custom packaging is very vague, but I don't have, I mean...
Or where's that one?
I could go wrong.
You know, like a UPS store.
It's indoor.
Like a UPS store or something is what I see in that.
Okay, so we're okay with their land use portion. Okay.
There's a question here with merchandise. You may want to consider defining retail type to ensure sustainability of the revenues, minimize public safety.
What was the number on that?
1.24.
2.24. Retailer shops intended for retail for good or, I don't care. Merchandise is fine with me.
I think it's okay.
They're talking about shopping in merchandise.
Merchandise, I don't know. That's just two words that sort of mean the same thing.
It's redundant, but if that's what they want.
What is their comment?
If that, if they put it there, it's sort of unnecessary, but it's...
They want to consider defining retail types to ensure sustainability of revenue, minimize public service expense, and avoid the retail roller coaster, business in, business out. I think defining it creates more of a business in, business out situation. That was his, can you see his comments?
Yeah. The retail roller coaster.
I think he's just saying in and out like...
Minimize public safety expense.
I see the silver ones there.
Basically, I would, I think his intent is putting more, more definability on it so that you don't have the like mom and pops that go in and out. But I feel like defining it causes more of that. Because you're, then you're making it so narrow of a thing. I think that's an odd comment.
Successful and then fade and then stuff can be, there's phases.
I look at it as the proprietaries, as the proprietor's problem, not theirs, you know? Whoever owns the business is their problem, yeah.
Yep, they have in and out every other month. That's, they've got an empty building.
As long as they're getting their rent money, I don't see what they do.
We don't put that requirement on any other business, any other...
Well, I just don't know how we would be able to define the retail types, especially because we don't know what's going there. We don't, we're not, we're not agents, we're not market analysis or analyzers or any of that. Analysts, yeah. Long day. Okay, use wise, good. Development standards or development site standards? I'm sorry, so do we have any issues on the site development standards?
Well, I thought, I lament the 50 feet, but that's, that's who's going to have to get with that. But I am concerned about the setbacks if it should abut a residential zone.
Well, let's...
And understand, I don't, and I, I understand for their setbacks internally, it doesn't, but on the north side...
Can we talk about that? Because this is...
I know they're going to have that buffer zone, but I would just as soon put the setbacks, it's not going to change their design. It just makes sure they don't change the design to create the problem.
So, so when we're talking about setbacks, I mean, we can just do it this way. Because I, this was the part that I read the most when I was reviewing it. So in our eyes, if we're, let's make sure we're all talking the same thing. So we have the residential area, everyone can see, right? Residential area on this side, then residential, what you would consider through the canal piece, right? This, this buffer. So when I'm here, do you want a whole packet, Tim? I happen to have one. So when I was reviewing it, going, okay, yes, so their setbacks hit all of ours, the 10 side yard, 20 front, in a regular scenario, 20 front yard, rear yard, those match. Then when I was looking at the residential, in my opinion, they have 20, or sorry, they have 100 feet here plus at least a 66 foot road. Then 20 foot front edge.
If, I have no problem if this is the way it ends up looking, that there's plenty of setback. I, I do have problems though, that without defining it here, we leave open the option that they could creep a lot closer to the residential.
Is getting recorded with their development agreement.
This thing?
Yes. So they will be stuck to the road layout of this concept.
As long as there's nothing changes here, I mean, the way they defined it, the setback is a long ways away. I mean...
Right. And that's why I'm like, I'm okay with what they have written in here because in reality, they have 166 foot buffer, 88.
Based on their projected building size, the setback would have to be 65 feet. You know where that number came from?
From the height of...
And the stuff on top.
Yes. Would have to be in a normal situation.
No, I'm saying we would want their setback to be at least 65 feet from the residential property line.
Which this would be well, well over that.
But would there be any harm done in simply adding a second sense in res, when it abuts residential zone, the setback is, and then use our very language we've got in our own?
The only thing is, is they need to be able to calculate it from the property line.
Of course, that's what, yeah.
We can add that in there and see if they are okay with that.
Well, I...
I, I just don't see the, I mean, I'm, I'm okay with this.
You have confidence in this. I, I like the ordinances to protect against the possibility that it changes. It, we could add this and it will not change what they're planning on doing. So they, I can't see them objecting to it. And if you go in our residential zone, where's that?
The only thing we need to make sure that we add is that it's, well, I guess that's...
You just say, when it abuts a residential, no, clearly, that's all. So I don't have it, well, I don't have that other, maybe you've got it in front of, the one you just handed out. Okay. Yeah, yeah.
That's a piece that's owned by the canal company.
Yeah, all we would do is, is use one and two on that. If it abuts a residential.
Our Bureau, yeah, sorry.
If it is...
No, Mr....
No, it's all right.
This, one piece reading is on the back page of that M1 that...
Okay, sorry, go ahead.
And all it would say is if, if the setback adjacent to a residential zone shall be equal or greater than the highest point of the building. Just put that in as a second sentence.
Hold on, what sentence? So you're saying...
It's right there.
One, one, A1.
Right there, adjacent to...
Okay, okay.
The back page.
Setbacks adjacent to any residential agricultural shall be equal to or greater than the highest point of the building. Okay.
You could just put that as a sentence, extra sentence on both of those, the rear and the side.
Where should we put it in? The...
Just put it, where it says minimum side setback and minimum rear, just put it as a second sentence. See what I'm...
So adding in setbacks.
Adjacent to, and I'd just use our exact language. I wouldn't put minimum because that sentence does the job, don't you think, Greg?
Yeah.
I, you know, I'd just keep it simple. Just put that sentence attached to both of those.
Cultural Zone, oops. Shall be, let me just put this in while, equal to or greater than the highest.
Shouldn't change them at all, their plans at all, just protects us.
Setbacks adjacent to any residential agricultural zone shall be equal to or greater than the highest point of the building. Okay. Shall be equal, so the highest point of the building is 50 feet. They need to be at least 50 feet away from the property line. Okay, gotcha. That's what makes sure I interpret it right. Yep. Okay, moving through that.
If we can't make the building shorter, let's make darn sure the setbacks as long far away as it can be. That's all I'm saying.
No, I'm with that. Not arguing.
Did that interpret the highest point though, being the additional allowed 15 feet of structure?
Well, yeah, that was interesting. The building, what do you call the stuff on top of the building? Is that part of the building?
No, that's the...
They're HVACs usually, or...
HVAC, you could have a water tank up there. You could have...
So that is not part of the...
That's architectural features.
I'm not...
That's what we went into, that that's not what nature...
I'm not going to quibble over that.
That's, that's where the difference is, is I don't think a water tank is an architectural feature.
A water tank up there.
You don't know that. You don't know that.
Where's the last building you saw a water tank on top?
New York?
No.
In Weaver County.
Nowtown Salt Lake.
One year. I'm just kidding.
The other thing is, is what if they put an antenna up there? And there's nothing to prevent them?
Personally, I'm more concerned of the block wall of the building.
Sure.
That's, that's, I thought was the intent of this.
Well, I'm just, the point I was trying to make was it's 50 feet.
They have trees planted on the top or whatever.
Another 15 foot antenna, so it's 65 feet. That's the point I'm trying to make.
Yeah, but can a block of you or cause any...
It's not a solid...
You say the wall though, if in front of the AC units, they do what a lot of buildings do and they put a solid like...
Yeah, privacy thing.
My, my stance is this. This is what we, we're satisfied in C2 and M1. Why do we need to mess around?
We don't have a height restriction. We don't have a height restriction.
Well, that was my point to the whole thing is, we're worried about 50 foot walls, yet our C2 and M1 have zero height restrictions.
A setback from the property line, that's the height.
Yeah.
So now they have to be 50 feet instead of 20 feet.
So everybody's in agreement? You add that sentence for 2.1.8, 2.1.9, both of them? I would put it all for the rear and side because you don't wear the rest of...
I just did setbacks adjacent to any residential agricultural zone shall be equal to.
What is that? What's that going to be?
I made it its whole new.
Great, perfect. Okay.
So it's 2.1.9.
I don't care, but do we really want 2.1.7? Do we really want to tell them the color the building has to be?
Hold on, structures...
I think it's absurd.
Yeah.
Wait, building color shall be predominantly earth tones. I, here's the thing, that's coming from Marriott Sladeville because, but listen, because Amazon blue building. Imagine if that had been earth tones? That was like a Marriott Sladeville thing. I think if they're willing to go that, that route...
No, no, they...
I'm great with it.
No, no, I'm saying delete it because we're, we're more liberal than them. We don't have to restrict ourselves.
Here's the only thing I don't, I don't want to happen is if Marriott Sladeville side is earth tones and we say no and they come in with a neon green building, it, it takes the whole project and makes it look like two projects.
We'll pink polka dot.
Have you seen the caves?
That one's, that one's not a battle I want to fight, so it just...
Is this in reaction to the Amazon building?
It, it actually has always been in their code, oddly enough.
Earth tones, earth tones.
Somehow they got away with it.
That's what I, when I got, that's actually dated.
Yeah.
But I, why would we not, I mean, if they're willing to do it, I would rather see an earth tone.
It's absurd. What I'm saying is that's a restriction I would put on them, on our code, which we...
Clearly, they're okay with it.
But if we take it out of our code, Geneva, they can still do it and they could, but they could do something else. All we're saying is we're not hung up about earth tones.
But here's what I don't want to see, is the building to not look like it was developed, or the space to not look like it was developed together. And have buildings that are blue and then all of Marriott Sladeville's side is tans and creams.
And what are the fun side? So do you want to go to the fun side?
The developer wouldn't do that anyway.
I know, but here's the thing, if they're offering to put it in...
It's, it's innocuous. It's, it's unnecessary, but it's innocuous.
But it's odd that you have an issue on the setback saying that it has to be...
No, the setback is real.
Residential, when it already says that in there too.
There's a difference. No, there is. I'm removing it, the color is removing a restriction. The setbacks is increasing the restriction.
Redundancy.
There's, no, no, there, no, no, you, you don't follow. When I, when we add that sentence, we're adding an additional restriction. When I'm suggesting removing this, we're actually removing a restriction, not adding it.
Let them go.
So we're going both, but so because it's removing a restriction, I don't care.
Okay. I just feel like if, if we're doing it one, this is where we have to be very careful that this is a big plot of land, a large area. If it doesn't look all one, it's going to look very weird.
Argument well made.
Okay, thank you. Moving on. Like one time, we're getting something that is like... 1-1, or 1-1. I'm just kidding. Okay, is there anything else as far as site development standards?
Uh, let's just keep going. We did talk about screening and we normally talk about how tall the wall is. I'm satisfied with the way they worded though.
Right.
If the wall covers it up, I really don't care how tall the wall is. Is everybody in agreement with that?
Yeah.
So I thought shall screen from Eview. So as far as I was concerned, that's fine.
Okay, I like that.
Landscaping, I would suggest we just put our whole section in there. We don't use their adaptability, we don't use their low water usage, we don't use their plant selection. We just put in our whole landscape piece. Anybody got a problem with that?
No, because right now, I mean, right now, if you're looking at it, the lot coverage can be 55% for the building and accessory buildings and excluding any surface areas or parking structures. So 45, so you're going to have 55% of the site developed as buildings and 45% of it being parking lot.
Which one are you reading?
2.14. Site development standards.
I thought we were on a landscaping.
Yeah, well, I'm just trying to, the point, no, no, the point I'm making is we require not less than 10% of the site.
Okay, now, one thing...
Coverage shall be 55%.
No, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is a lot, the lot coverage for the main building and accessory buildings can be 55%.
Right.
Based off of this ordinance.
Right.
Okay. It excludes surface areas and parking structures.
Right.
So the other 45% could be asphalt.
Right.
Okay?
Yeah.
With no landscaping.
Well, they have to, but then you read down, they have to have 20% landscaping.
Well, that's not what this says right here, so...
But you're reading it separate from how it's intended.
The landscaping portion.
Yeah, you're reading, you're reading it opposite because then 2.4.7 talks about the landscape and open space minimum, 20% calculation.
But that's of the overall site.
Yes.
This is per site.
Yeah, but they're going to have to move that to be per building or they'll never, never reach that. Do you know what I mean?
Does that buffer count?
Yeah, but the overall site has to be 20% too.
How much is that buffer right now?
I think it ended up being like six acres or something. It was quite a bit. That's towards their, their open space.
Is that all of it? So they could just have some net everywhere?
12.47%. There you go.
So they have to get another 8% within the rest of the building.
Okay, can I, this, this is ours. Now, last time we discussed, we discussed two changes to our existing landscaping thing. The first one is we say 10%, and didn't we all agree we'll go with their 20%? Why not? Okay, so we'd change, so that's one thing we would change from ours, since we would change the 10% to 20%. And the other thing, underwatering, we went around and around on this, and I think we all agreed the water supply unless proven unavailable. Didn't we agree with that? And then I think we all agreed that we would just delete culinary water shall not be used because they couldn't get the permit, permission to use that. So those are...
They do have secondary water, so that's not an issue.
But the point is, those were two changes to our existing...
Last week, they didn't, last week, they didn't have culinary, secondary water.
No, we weren't even talking about the same projects last week. That was, yeah, that was Kubota. That's where we got so confused last night.
That's, we, we got that, that's why we changed the wording.
Yes.
It was, it was a more general thing. Okay, and we've changed that. So my, what I've just given you is I would suggest we use our landscaping as written, as current, with the modification of 20% and the addition of unless proven unavailable and deleting that culinary water shall not be used. Otherwise, we just plug that whole thing in for our landscaping piece.
We should require...
Unless somebody thinks we shouldn't.
Is the outdoor door storage part of our landscape piece? And that, shouldn't it stop there at eight?
Eight B?
That's B. Landscaping's A, B's outside storage.
Yeah, so, so we're stopped, we're just doing landscaping one through eight.
And replace their, that's what I'm suggesting.
And on number two at the end, it should be 20%?
And I may have missed some other, whatever, wherever that's... But I'm saying that's something we can, you can just cut and paste in with the modification. Is everybody okay with that?
You're saying one through eight?
Deleting culinary water shall not be used.
Right, and I've got that...
Emails Brandon they were sending around on the water language.
I liked Brandon's verbiage on that.
Yeah, Jason did some good work and then I just kind of...
I figured you used AI probably.
Pretty good.
Oh, gosh. You know what, well, and, and this may be something added and I, I always err on the simpler side, but let's see. The landscape plan shall include a secondary water supply. The irrigation system shall be designed to ma, to minimize water consumption by using an underground drip or bubbler system with automatic controller. Overhead spray, spraying shall not be allowed. If the secondary water is proven unavailable, the use of culinary water may be permitted, subject to the review of the Culinary Water Company. Adequate evidence of the unavailability of secondary water must be provided to the appropriate authorities before utilizing culinary water. If the water district allows for the use of culinary water, all guidelines and restrictions laid out by the district must be followed. I like it.
Where did that come from?
That was an email.
Jason and I, remember how Jason?
It's fine with me. I just didn't, it, it sets well with me and just...
Jason started one, then the mayor chimed in and then I chimed in to say, don't we want them to follow it?
We've all, this is where we've all agreed to anyway, so, so basically, you're taking one through eight.
Yep.
We don't touch the outside storage because they've already covered that one, right? I don't really care that much about dust and weeds.
I'm just taking one, or one through eight. Okay. Then I think next time we'll add in this.
Then we have to go to the M1 zone adjacent to residential and pluck a couple more things out of that.
Okay, what are we plucking?
Everything about lighting.
I do, can we jump back there still in landscaping?
Yeah.
I do like the 2.46.
Shall be selected with consideration given to specific conditions and shit. That's perfect. Okay.
To add that to ours?
Oh, yeah, because that's one of the...
I didn't have any prob, that was...
The microclimate is the hotspots that I've been talking about.
We got something sort of similar to that. Where is it?
Well, in next meeting, we, let's relook at our C2 and M1.
You know where I'd put it? Plant materials, because we say, shall be planned with plants that are well suited to conditions at the project site. And may, okay, so that's just an expansion of that same concept. We've already said it. So if you want to put that...
I just like their verbiage better.
No, no, well, no, but that's where it would go.
Right.
Okay, so under plant materials.
And that will do, I just want to keep these separate because I don't want it, like last meeting confusing all of this together. So next meeting, we'll talk about updating the C2 and M1.
No, 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 but no, what he's saying is they have some language in their landscaping. We will add that. We're, we're going to put our piece, we're going to replace their piece, but we're going to take some of their language under five.
What are we taking out of theirs then?
Okay, that's, where was it? I, I saw that. I liked it.
Is it keep?
We're going to try and pull it into our...
And 2.47 has to be...
It would be, it would be embedded in our five. Okay? So that's an addition. We take that and incorporate it in our five.
We already addressed it.
But let's not talk about ours. Let's talk about this so I don't get confused.
No, no, you're going to take this whole thing and put it in.
I know, but let's talk about the, the ITZ zone so I don't get confused on what we're adding to ours. I know, but what are we taking out of that?
No, we are taking...
I'm, I'm good with that. What are we taking out of the ITZ zone?
This, this one sentence that says, plants shall be selected with consideration given to specific bubbler.
No, no, two, so start at 2.4.
2.4.6.
Okay, but am I leaving?
2.4, we take our whole ordinance of landscaping.
Tell me 2.41, am I deleting?
All of it, right? Or just replacing it with...
Let's go through each because we can't be, because 2.47 can't be deleted.
Except for seven.
And 2.46?
2.41.
So...
Materials shall be selected...
Let's go 2.41.
Under our five, our landscape A5, you will add to that the 2.4.6 from theirs.
Right. Okay, but...
It just expands it, so it's got...
2.41 are we keeping?
Of theirs.
Materials shall be selected for the adaptability to the environment.
Or are we throwing in our whole ordinance?
Which we also have in there. All areas shall be planted with plants that are well suited to cond... Which we also have in there. All areas shall be planted with plants that are well suited to conditions at the project site.
We've already said that.
That's what I'm saying.
Okay, so we're taking, we're taking that out.
We take two point four one out.
Okay.
Low water usage, selected plant materials shall have low water usage-
From their landscaping.
Let's go through each of them, because I'm the one that has to rewrite them. Sorry, I know this is, I know this seems stupid, but I'm the one that has to put the red line.
It's fine, you're good.
So you're talking about going through ours.
No, no, the ITZ.
Want to remove, so we're just gonna X it out. We wanna cut it.
So we just eliminated two point four one.
We don't want two point four one.
Low water usage, selected plant materials shall have low water usage-
We don't want two point four point two. We don't want two point four point three.
Okay, so plant material you took and select, okay, I thought that was the verbiage you liked. No, sorry, two point four six.
Now, I did like their addition, which we probably, two point four point four, we probably ought to plug that in.
My numbers are changing, so I don't know what number.
You don't have that.
The one that's plant material-
Interference. Plant materials shall not interfere with anticipated large vehicle use using roads and service bay area.
So the branches don't hang out over the roads for the trees.
That one we don't have.
Oh, no, okay, so-
Four point four.
So we're gonna use, we're gonna-
Plant materials shall comply to the architecture-
Point four point four.
Primary points of public access to building. I still like two point four three, where it talks about how it should be landscaped in the sense of primary portions of public access to buildings providing, providing shade to commonly used-
I don't have any problem with that.
Okay, I think they're so good.
We're keeping two four three.
Yep.
And two four four.
Order of the sequence.
I know, well, my sequence already changed, so I'm screwed up.
Two four five.
Okay, then no interference, we're leaving.
Yeah.
Additional landscaping emphasis, any additional landscaping emphasis shall be added to highly visible traffic corridors and lessen the emphasis, oh, and lessened F emphasis will be required on landscaping adjacent to the use that are geographically removed from visible traffic corridors. I would leave that.
Is that even relevant to the Far West side?
Not really, but I wanted to be cohesive with-
I know what you're trying to do, you're trying to olive branch.
Sure, it's-
We do have the freeway.
Yeah.
Not our problem. That's up to the building official.
So then, plant list. We will see a landscape design. Plant list shall be selected with consideration given to-
To make them happy, we're saying, I know what, I know what game you're playing.
Well, I'm just saying that-
We will include as much as we can of yours, but understand-
You also have ours.
We have a life over here too, and we're gonna put ours in.
Two point four six stays.
Read what, what it's called, because all my numbers have changed now.
Two point four point six, plant list, plants shall be selected with consideration given to specific microclimate conditions, including sunshade, solar aspect, size, growth, habit.
Got it, got it.
Habitat of selected species, duh duh duh, okay, two point four seven.
Don't, okay, yes. Is that, what is that called? Landscaping in open space?
Landscaping in open space minimum, twenty percent. Open space trails landscaping and parks shall be measured on a project wide basis rather than an individual parcel basis.
Yep. And the public open space areas dedicated to the city along with the open space green space trails landscaping and parks located within the project will be included in the-
When you're editing this, you might want to, what our statement says-
The only thing I want to-
I'm saying they're more specific. We simply say, uh, the plants that are well suited to the conditions at the project site. That's our general, very brief statement. They get much more specific. Selected with consideration given to, so I don't think we need that, we don't need to say it twice.
What?
We say, plants that are well suited to the condition of the project site, a very general statement. They go in to say, based on microclimate, sunshade, solar size, blah-bitty blah blah. So the, the, the point is, theirs, theirs is much more inclusive. So if we wanna leave ours in, it's just you say it twice, that's all, but that's-
Okay.
Which number are you talking about, Lou?
No, and, listen to the-
The word, you're looking in the-
He's telling you about number five on ours.
Our five, the first part of it says, plants that are well suited to conditions at the project site.
Is two point four point six plant list?
That one, we could replace that whole thing with what they're saying, because they're much more specific, that's all I'm saying.
No, I'm just, I was trying to find, I was trying to find where you-
It's all under plant material.
I'm just trying to find out which number you were looking at.
And, so whatever you incorporate under their plant list is gonna end up under our plant material.
Yes.
Section, okay?
Yes, so, yes, because I have add two point four point six to plant materials. Then the watering piece, okay, so two point four point seven, is that what landscaping and open space minimum is yours?
Yes.
Okay, we're leaving that.
So project wide includes the, the Marriott Sladeville side also?
The only reason I would say not to touch that is because the open space works with Marriott Sladeville. So it has to be project wide, otherwise we, it doesn't work, it doesn't work.
Just, let's run them, because this one I put an exclamation point by.
More landscaping on each side.
No, it would be twenty percent still.
Of Marriott's side and Far West's.
And I, that's what's satisfying me. When they get on the Far West side, they've gotta have twenty percent.
And that's something they're giving that we aren't, because we're ten percent.
I thought this, we had one zone that covered all, but our protection is when they get on our side, they've gotta-
Individual sites.
Comes out to ten percent overall.
Because we got two zones.
Already twelve percent by the buffers. So they're gonna split eight percent throughout the rest of the whole project.
But that's the one thing that has, same with the roads, it has to work together. And they have chosen the higher number, so I'll give them that.
How did they come up with their parking ratios? Just curious.
That's pretty standard. They probably took them, so ours is three for commercial, four for medical, uh, retail, I think, is three as well. Parking for industrial, then, we don't have an industrial parking rate, I don't think anyways, but it might just be a, those are pretty standard numbers, if that makes sense.
To me, the only other two things are lighting and noise, and I would just take what we've got. Not even, because they're-
But that's adjacent to the-
No, but you label that. When adjacent, the, the lighting, and you would put that, you'd put lighting requirements when adjacent to a residential zone and noise levels adjacent to a residential zone, that's all you'd have to do.
Is that where I'm putting in?
These would be two standalone things.
Am I putting the whole, I'm not putting the setbacks?
You're putting in-
Am I just putting lighting, C, one through four?
One through four. Well, no, it goes through six.
Six.
It goes through six.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
And you'd want, under the lighting, you'd be lighting adjacent to a residential zone, you'd want that qualifier. So C, one through six with the qualifier, and D, one through two with the qualifier also adjacent to a residential zone. And E?
No.
He's already on there.
We were doing, we were doing so well.
Yeah, you were doing so good until that comment. Do you like how nice I just didn't know? Okay.
You would have, you would have had some support on that note.
Okay, I'm gonna add all that now. Putting all of that in, which, I mean, we don't know what they'll say, but I, I don't think anything that we've added is a bill breaker, but adding all of that piece, so I just want everyone to know the piece of this. So what will happen is this becomes the ITZ commercial zone, which they will then come in for the rezone of this. I was sorry, sorry, we'll approve this, or if we do approve it, whatever we do, that portion. Then what they would come in is come in rezone the whole thing for this zone. Then they would come in, and there's still a development agreement that has to be approved.
We will scrutinize.
Yes, which the develop, I mean, most of what's in the zone pretty much is what the development agreement is. So there'll be like some details on building and situations with Marriott Sladeville as far as impact fees and keeping them all together, all those kind of things. But other than that, that's what the steps will be. So, and you've already seen like a base development agreement.
There's those two paragraphs, I'd like to see some language changed. Basically, it says they can make any change.
Yeah, yeah.
And that will be modified, but that's, that's not this, that's not this.
Correct, yeah, so this is just the zone that will allow that.
I can't see that this would bother Sladeville. It's just when you go on the Far West side, we're a little more careful about a couple things. We're not changing what you do. You can still keep the buildings earth tone.
Still what? Oh, yeah. I don't understand why, like, why are we picking crap that-
I'll tell you why.
Had it not been in there, you would have said something. I want a blue Amazon building.
No, it's a dated ordinance. Now, it's one thing to say the building should be of consistent color or scheme, but when they say earth tone, it dates it.
This is the way to make it a consistent theme, and they put it in there.
What if it was another beautiful color?
What if they wanna be like a craftsman?
You want, you want a purple building out there?
I want-
What do you want?
In red.
Right. Well, and it says in there that it, that it is, okay, the verb, the exact verbiage that talks about it says that. Um, shall not, so it is limited to an accent or detail on the building that shall not exceed ten percent of the wall surface. So they can still have a pop. But I, in all the things we err on the safe side for, it is so weird that you're like, hey, yeah, go put some neon green up there, I don't give a crap.
Have we ever, ever dictated color in Far West?
No.
Never.
But here's one that's-
Never.
The only, if it was just our city, I would totally say whatever, but seeing that Marriott Sladeville's side already says that, whatever it is, I want it to run in ours.
A big carrot for them, give it to them.
You know what that means though? What about two point two?
What?
Reflective windows.
It's on there?
It's on there.
Oh, it's on there, but is it gonna stay there?
Why wouldn't it stay there?
I don't know, I'm just asking that question.
Was that one of theirs?
No, it's one that I added.
Wait, where is it?
What's, what's?
Two point two.
We'll see if they say anything.
Like, two, where is it? Where, I don't even see it.
Building materials.
Yellow gold in two point two.
Oh, windows shall not be reflective, tinting is permitted, provided they do not become reflective as part of, yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that.
I think primarily office building.
Yeah, I don't know why we care about that. It's the same as paint color, why do we care?
Well, because I've seen them melt cars.
Yeah, it could be annoying for residents.
It could be annoying. Not, not only that, you're coming down the freeway and all of a sudden you get blinded.
Yeah, but think about windows nowadays.
I've seen windows where they've been reflective within the last five years.
Yeah.
Okay, can I argue against that?
Sure, all you want.
Well, this is, this is solid argument. Because the residential zone for Far West is on the north and east side, how is reflection off a window gonna be an issue?
On the east side.
On the east side and-
As the sun rises over the mountains, it'll reflect off those windows.
The sun is clear up there.
Right?
The real issue-
It reflects.
That's north, that's east.
Think about your reflection angle.
Oh my- What is this? Is this a, is this a great, is this a great conspiracy going on here?
One thing about this color scheme-
Yeah.
Is that they'll never get a John Deere dealership.
I have east facing-
They'll have to ask for various, I know, I know, it's true. But I'm doing a John Deere building right now, and they just-
Please, I'll give you that.
Okay, okay.
Well, actually, no, they'll have ag and commercial.
That was one of the problems.
What's the name of the guy?
It's RDO.
That looks reflective, but it's not. They came out of the-
Twenty first street or what?
Came out of Sugar House.
Right there on that corner, by the commercial tire, really?
Yeah, that'll be cool.
In the, uh, Mill Creek office complex.
Heard of Miss Noah's.
Well, they got a car, that's what I'm talking about. So they, they owned it.
I know, but they, they, we're talking about building there, but they got so much stuff from Port Haven and-
Sprinkling their lawn in the middle of the day.
Once they got acquired. Right, so come and go on it, once they got acquired.
Some of it is absurd. I've got neighbors and I'm thinking, are you kidding me? And on a, on a hundred and three degree day, you're watering your lawn at two o'clock?
Yep, on a year like this.
They do sell some ag stuff, so, yeah, that'll be cool. It's been in the works for like a year and a half, but-
Uh, we were basing, based on the water supply, I don't think you're out here, so we're not doing any-
Except that I worry about relaxing and then them forgetting the rules. It seems like you've got a good rule in place.
But they're looking to experience.
That's RDO.
Was that RDO? Oh, that's what it was, hon, I'm sorry.
No, you're good. I'm like, how, what's that? Yeah, so no, so-
So if they're watering between ten and six, like it's a regular habit.
That's where they're gonna come in and-
It's just, it seems like good citizenship when you can water at a certain time.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's true. Okay, do we have any other comments related to this? So if I redo those red lines, then we'll send it back-
I think so.
And feel good on their responses. Does that-
Well, we actually see it.
So now, are we still setting a public hearing tonight?
Yes, yep, based on what would be the zone of this.
You know, that what you're talking about is trivial edits.
Right, yeah. The base of it is stays.
The substance we've, we've done.
And then we'll have a redo when we go through the development agreement, but that portion should, shall be, should be easy, so.
Why don't you just say shall?
Shall, should be, yeah. Has to be easy. Do you need me?
Yeah, no, I only wear it about forty-five hours.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, but still.
Oh, you're good, you're good. It's such an easy meeting. Okay, perfect. Okay, I like it, I like it. I'll read through it.
It's an official minutes.
Look at you go.
You don't mind.
Okay, I'll read it. That's perfect. Thank you very much. Thank you. Yeah, no, you gotta sit here for eight more minutes. It's gonna get the break. This just adds more to my plate.
The, misters are interesting. They're, they're sort of a self-healing thing.
They are.
It's not, it's not necessarily always bad, it's just-
Yeah, this one, this one here is caused by friction.
Okay.
Because I was on it for twelve hours.
Yep.
It felt such a part of me that I didn't want to take it off my wife.
Einstein bagel, ten over chip.
It did? Take over chip, they just took the space of chips? Oh, I gotcha. That's kind of a cool, that's kind of cool. I don't, I hate Einstein bagel, but it's a cool one.
It's a strong word.
When you're a New Englander, well, yeah, first of all, I can't eat anything in there, but you're a New Englander, and we're talking about a real New England, New York style bagel. Einstein's got nothing. Oh, yeah, heck, yeah.
My bread is so special.
It's, yes, it's got a crisp edge and a soft middle.
I went now to New York-
I'm gonna bring you guys some New York bagels.
But I went to New York a couple times now, because our headquarters is there, but it's in Albany.
Oh, Albany.
They don't have any good pizza. It's like, I'm trying to find like good New York pizza.
But you're in Albany, you gotta go, yeah, no.
But I'm gonna, yeah, I don't really have time to drive in outside Albany.
But I bet you can find a good bagel place.
Yeah.
Yeah, New York style pizza's gonna be like in the heart of-
Albany's supposed to be pretty sketchy though. I saw lots of, like, a runaway car that was like slamming into stuff, and they're like, right in Albany, and I'm like, good gosh.
What?
Oh, wow.
California, Roosevelt, Farmers Market, now Farmers Market, I'll bet we'll compare with your bagels.
Really?
Sure.
Probably a New Yorker making them.
I'm not saying it's not, I'm just saying that-
There's something, like, they're, I'm gonna have to bring you guys some back someday.
What's the difference? I mean-
They're unreal. It's, it's-
Bread in a different form.
No, they are unreal. And you know, there's a place-
Bloom free, so last time she didn't touch that was like-
Last time, like, eight years ago. But there is even a place in New York City called Modern Bagel, that is all bloom free bagels. To die for. I, my mom ships them to me. To die for. Next time she does, I'll have to give some so your son can have a real bagel. They are, does he have a special kind he likes? Their cinnamon raisin is the best, though. Everything bagel? No, every, okay, just plain, okay. I don't know, you're like, ah, anything, actually, just plain. Their cinnamon raisin is. Oh, my gosh.
Well, three weeks ago, it was in Albany.
Where?
Talked to her about the headquarters. That's why my company's called Latham, because Latham, New York is the, where they do it and then, so when we go to headquarters.
You dig in your pool yet or what? No?
I had to pay taxes this year. I wasn't ready for that. All this, I wasn't ready for a lot of stuff that happened this year. Me and, me and Heidi, my wife, are having like a downer, downer year. We're having like, our dog that we barely like, it's probably like sick and it's like, oh my. And he's like, you might have to pay to get it surgery. I'm like, oh my heck. My dad would let it die. Everybody I know would let it die. She's like, well, our kids like it.
Right.
That's what I was gonna say.
What's wrong with it?
For twenty-five dollars?
She ate plastic.
Stuck in her stomach?
Yeah, so she might have to get surgery.
I'm telling you.
I don't like, like I know my kids like the dog, but I'm like, my dad would go and shoot it and bury it in the backyard. And everybody I knew would do that, but. But now it's like five grand for, now it's like five grand to go get a surgery and then it might eat another plastic thing. It's not a smart dog. It could just keep eating plastic every week and we have to just keep cutting it open and being like, you're eating plastic, you dumb dog.
I just love that you're like, yeah, and the dog I don't even like might die.
I like it a little bit. Like I had a sad moment. I looked at it and I was like, what did you do?
Is it in the hospital right now?
I do my ticket tomorrow.
Aww. Stop. What is wrong with the three of you?
Little dick. We're just like in a bad luck.
And don't, here, do me a favor, don't get another animal. Just leave, leave it as. It sounds like your kids are, are really taking it out of you, so just let it be.
Yeah, they're not doing that well. I think I'll pay a thousand, but beyond a thousand, that's a lot of money. I have rent for a dog.
I would.
Their dogs aren't even worth that.
Life. It's like, those are parts of your life.
Buy ten more dogs for that cost, like fancy ones. Not just. You could have a pack of dogs for that amount of money.
You guys.
Yes.
Don't talk about, I can't believe it. A dog, a dog I don't even like.
Yeah. I need yellow web.
I technically, I technically am not really. I've decided I like cats. They're so much easier. They don't make any, they don't make any noises. My dog barks and whines and everything. A cat is so quiet.
Now that you've just made that comment, I think so much of you. Like you're not even true guys. You like cats.
All right, I'll go up there. Just cause Lou said so.
I, um, I look at my siblings and they like all have dogs. Got a dog and like. You love it?
I love it.
I got a dog and it didn't chew it.
No.
What? Moving?
I'm half asleep, Greg.
Are you, uh?
Oh, you got a mic?
A little pain?
Taking the lower tacks.
Come on. Oh, they slid in. How did, how did it fall out? I guess it must've tilted.
Just the right way.
Enough microphones up there?
I'll let you on.
Brandon's mission, so is Greg. You brought that one to me. I already had one.
Yeah.
So thank you. There you go. There, you need some clarification.
Thank you.
Okay, now I'm gonna start this new thing. Who would like to give the pledge?
Oh. I prayed, I prayed last time. It's hard to pray like civilly. I could never think of something elegant to say.
Who would like to give the pledge?
I would like to give the pledge, particularly this month. I feel very patriotic.
Okay, Lou, you get the pledge.
I did the pledge last month.
The prayer is still up.
For grabs.
Yep.
I prayed last time. I can do it.
You're gonna do it?
I can, I can pray. I might need the blessings and I'm about to look right. I mean, just because you have to pay taxes.
That's okay.
I might, I might van that I had for eleven years just like died on my way. I had to get my van that I had for like eleven years died, so I had to get a new vehicle. And I announced like double the price for a new vehicle. It went from thirty K when I bought my van. No, I didn't buy a van.
Okay. Until two weeks ago, when we addressed it.
In his head, he's got more history.
Oh, really? I have no idea.
I'll get hybrid.
Yeah.
Okay. So you get like forty miles level.
I know this is a futile attempt, but I gotta still try and raise this seat.
If I did that, now I have.
Rocks.
It's terrible. End up on the horn and try to get out.
Oh, Geneva?
Yeah.
Draft in my neighborhood again.
I walked it this morning.
Oh, did you?
I saw that that shed is going up. I was a little confused. We'll talk about that after. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Welcome. First, we're gonna start with a pledge by Lou and then a prayer by Jason. Will you all stand?
Repeat after me. I reflect the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father in heaven, we're grateful that we have this opportunity to represent our city and look out for its best interests. We are blessed as we do so that we can be guided by thee and doing so in a way that's going to bless our community and our city and we pray for thy help and guidance and spirit to be here. I say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. First thing is public comment. Is there anyone in the public that would like to make a comment about something that's not on the agenda? I know, sorry, I'm looking at you. Okay, good, okay.
We thank you, Joan, for representing the public.
Yeah. Right, we're glad you came, okay. Uh, next, report from city council. So Tim is not going to be here tonight, but he did give me his breakdown, so I will read it. The meeting was, uh, September, wow. It was July eighteenth. There was no public comment. The city council approved a business license for a northern athletic facility, um, in the new Northville Business Plaza. Um, city council approved the sign for the North Ogden Surgical Center. City council reported on assignments regarding the Mountain View Park. The David J. reported on the progress of the modern income housing report due to the state on August first. He also reported that he has attended a few meetings regarding the economic development within the city and tells they're moving in a positive direction. Um, there were reports on the trail committee, the CERT program. Then, that the, I think all of the playground equipment for Mountain View Park has begun to arrive, which I have a question on for Lou, or for Lyle, I mean. Um, he also reported his meeting with Amy Marriott regarding several properties owned by the Marriott family in Far West and potential development. The meeting was positive and encouraging with the, with regards to the Marriott properties. They adjourned at seven. Any questions? Well, let's do this. If you have any questions, the minutes are online for you to review, cause I was not in attendance, so. Okay, move me on to the next one. Our first business item, set a public hearing for Thursday, August eighth to consider the request of a conditional use permit for a construction business for Caleb Stoker at thirteen oh nine North, twelve hundred West. This is just to set a public hearing.
Recommend we set a public hearing for August eighth, twenty twenty-four to consider request of the condition, the use permit for the construction business for Caleb Stoker at thirteen oh nine North, twelve hundred West.
Perfect. Uh, motion by Greg, second by Brandon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? August eighth. Sorry that you came for thirty seconds. You will have to speak at the public hearing. So just give them, you know, what your business is and what your intent is. That'll be it, so. Thank you.
I may have to recuse myself, as he was my contractor.
You obviously, oh god. If that's a serious question, you don't know what recusing is.
I do, I do.
Yes, just come up to the stand. Sorry, cause Mackenzie'll yell at me.
No, no, it's your, so this is, you know, back to our meeting we had last, to Friday or whatever it was.
He came to a development, a meeting a couple weeks ago.
Oh, yeah. They were talking about the three hundred foot rule with the secondary irrigation water and all that.
Yes.
So I've been working through that. Still haven't, Matt's out of town, so we haven't had a conversation, but.
Okay.
And it's coming down to having to find water shares, which is, you know, might be difficult. Is there ways around that or like, uh, is there a?
Only.
Adjustment, there are a lot more adjustments, but, uh, I can't think of what.
Basically a variance of some sort. The only thing I can think of, cause I, when you texted me, I was kind of trying to think of ideas. Call Bonavista. Because where you are, I don't know, I would call Bonavista and Pine View, because I don't know that.
I've been, I've been talking with Pine View and they're the ones that Pine View wants.
They want you to connect?
They don't really care.
Okay.
They just, but they want ten water shares to connect to their system.
Of West Warren?
Uh, Western.
Western. Um, I would call Bonavista and go the other way and see if they will house any of your landscaping.
As I say, is there a way to get around having, you know, zero escaping native plants through the city if?
Bonavista will take you? Yes.
Cause Bonavista will let me connect as long as I put on my plat, zero, you know, I can't remember zero escaping, I read through the emails, stuff like.
It's probably like a native plant using less than this amount of gallons per year. If Bonavista will take you, we would consider that.
Just out of curiosity, did, uh, did Pine View ask you to, you know, ten shares and, or, or cash instead or?
You can't cash. You can't need shares.
Okay, when I was buying, when, or we used to live, they wanted either so many shares or like four or five thousand dollars, you know, when I was.
And we're talking like hundreds of thousands of dollars.
I know water is a premium.
Yeah, and that's the same thing. I was, I've been on the phone with Pine View the last couple days and they just said, yeah, water shares is a big deal, is, you know, developing.
Maybe you and I can talk, cause Western, I think the shares are only like four or five hundred dollars a share.
Oh, and so that's like call the net card and she still has a color back. So I'm still looking into it, but I'm just.
But the thing with those is if you can find them.
Right.
So that's, so I would talk to Bonavista and go the other route. If, as long as Pine View is okay in saying we're, we don't need our line connected that way.
No, it's Bonavista that's driving, it's driving.
Yeah, making sure that Bonavista can take you, cause that'll be, if they say no, you need to connect, then you need to connect.
What, I, I'm curious, you said you were short. You have so many shares, but not enough, is that?
I don't have any shares. There's no shares.
Oh, you're really short.
That's, that's the issue.
Help you in our ordinance, at least how it's written, to say, I am using, Bonavista has allowed me to use for X amount of gallons a year for the secondary, um, and Pine View's okay with that.
No, I'm just trying to find workarounds to see, make this work.
That's your best workaround.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next one. Set a public hearing for Thursday, August eighth to consider approval of the new innovation technol, tech zone, ITZ. Is there any questions on this one?
Thought we covered all the questions quite well in our work session, so I would recommend that we set a public hearing for Thursday, August eighth, to consider approval of the new innovative tech zone.
Motion by Lou.
I'll second.
Second by Lyle. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is set for August eighth. Okay, moving on to approval of the minutes dated July eleventh, twenty twenty-four.
Recommend we approve the minutes dated July eleventh, twenty twenty-four.
Motion by Greg. Second by Greg. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, report on assignments. Greg?
None.
Lou, Lyle, sorry.
It's okay.
Yeah, I can't get.
Let me call others.
I do have a question.
Okay, uh, we had a park meeting, um, last month, this past Monday, actually, the eighteenth, I guess a week ago. Anyway, uh, we discussed the Mountain View Park. Um, we're still in talks with, uh, the YUSA, Utah U-S, UYS, I can't remember the acronym. Anyway, we're still working those, working those bugs out as far as their proposal goes. Uh, but we are gonna move ahead with our portion. And so they're gonna start bringing in the utilities and things like that, because we have money already in the conference for that. Anyway, so we're, we're slowly moving forward and so are, it's just work in progress. And also, uh, like I mentioned in my last meeting, or in our last meeting, we abandoned this replacement project here. And so I've been over there at the other park. And yeah, that needs to be done before anything. And I think there was a general consensus that that park over there at the old city shop, the city shops would get used more than this anyway, because of the Bowery and the, the, the whole complex, yeah. And so, you know, we've talked about taking down the fence, those two, two trees have got to come out and everything. Also, what I was trying to do was lay the groundwork, so we're not wasting a year on, for grants, because the, the grant that we can apply for right now in December is the same one that we're doing this other playground. And it opens up in December first. Uh, we did, finally, we had some setbacks on that, the, uh, grant through the, uh, Uorg, uh, for the matching funds, just because, uh, we were under the impression, I think I mentioned this, we were under the impression that we had the grant, but it was approved by the, by Uorg itself. Out of, out of the entire state, there was only five, uh, grants that were approved and ours was one of them, to move forward to the National Park Service. And, uh, I, Katie and I worked together and finished up their questions and the rest of the paperwork. And it got, Evan sent us a message a few weeks ago and said that it's been submitted and we expect to be here back from the National Park Service in September sometime. So, anyway, now you have some questions about that playground.
Um, yes. What is the, so I, just because I go by there every day, what's sitting over there?
This is sequoia log.
Okay, okay.
Is it big brown?
Cause I'm like, all the stuff that the neighborhood voted on, that doesn't look like anything. So I was, everyone's like, what is that?
What's happened is that, is that Vern Garrett is starting to send stuff out.
Oh, cool.
See, we, we can't do anything with the playground right now until we get the rest of the funding from the National Park Service.
Cause it didn't, the pictures that we've seen, I'm like, where does that fit in?
Yeah, it's, it's called, I've got a copy of the plans. It's called the sequoia log, it's be laying, it'll lay down in the playground. Um, the rest of the, some of the parts that are sending out is over at the public works in that new shop area and that, on that south side, so. I, I haven't, I haven't been over there, but they were, we were talking about it in the meeting, they said there's a couple of big pieces over there.
Yeah, there's a lot of.
We didn't have the equipment to move it if we was to.
Curious, it didn't match what the photos were, so everyone's like, what are those?
Yeah, it's just, it's the sequoia. It's part of the playground. It's a sequoia log that I guess lays down and kids climb through it. I don't know. Anyway.
That's my only question.
Yeah, that's also I've got.
Okay, Lou?
Uh, the, some members of the, uh, housing committee met again today.
Great.
And we went to, created a draft for the modern income housing report.
Great.
And we feel comfortable that we're gonna have all the elements in that report that they require. And we will be able to submit it on time.
Awesome. That's great news. Thank you. Brandon?
What? I don't have anything.
This was just the draft. You'll be notified on the next meeting when we exit. We were just grinding through the rough stuff.
I wanna help, I just.
Well, you will when you see it.
Jason, do you have anything? I honestly don't know what I have or not. It's been a long week, so I don't have anything to report unless I'm missing anything. We haven't had development meeting in a minute.
Lately.
So, other than this, I don't know if there's anything else coming up, so. But I'll think if there is, I'll email it out, but.
How's the dock coming along?
The what?
The dock.
Oh, oh. The fishing dock is, uh, slowly but surely, I talked to actually Tom today. Uh, John Wade is the individual that's doing the, that's doing the drafting for it. And, uh, Tom actually talked to him, Tom was over at the house today, we were talking about it. He said that, he's, he's talking, John's has other projects with his regular job, but, uh, Tom's trying to get a fire lit, so to maybe at least get some of the plans, because what Tom's gonna do is, once the blueprints are done, then Tom's gonna compare the engineering, his engineering notes with the, with the blueprints. And so it'll be ready to go once, you know, once, uh, once the last, so Tom could be working on them while he's working on the other blueprints. But right now, John told us that he would have it hopefully done by the end of July, so. once the last, so Tom could be working on them while he's working on the other blueprints. But right now, John told us that he would have it hopefully done by the end of July, so I am going to call, be calling him early next week and following that, but our goal is to still get this fabricated and installed by late fall, but I'm starting to be a little concerned. We had twenty-six months to put it in, and we're a year and a half into it, but I'm the one who wait twenty-six months.
Right.
So, uh, we're just, we're just waiting on John Wade, but he's doing this on the side in addition to his other regular work at Hill Air Force Base as a draftsman and stuff.
But now, what's his relationship with Tom?
He's, he's, he owns a company called Design Inc. in North, in North Ogden, and what he does is, he actually designs and builds houses, he designs homes. In fact, he designed, uh, Tom Berkin's house. Uh, he's been doing a lot of work for Hill Air Force Base, and they're updating their complexes and things like that in buildings. This dock, uh, Tom was trying to find somebody that we could rely on that could do the drafting for this project, and he knows John Wade well enough that he recruited him, and we felt comfortable enough to move forward with him, and so.
I guess my, my, this was the preliminary question. The real question is,
Sorry.
how much leverage does Tom have to put the burner underneath him to get it done?
We're both putting the burner under.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. We, we actually had a really good productive meeting here about three, four weeks ago, and we finalized everything, all the, he made some, he made, he made the design, and then he came back to us to talk about, uh, to go over everything, to make sure that we didn't miss anything, and then he, and now, now that the preliminary plans are done, now they're gonna go to print. And so now he's actually creating the, you gotta create the blueprints, it's a component list of every single item that has to go in there, and we made some really good changes that'll make it easier to lay it in. For instance, we have, we can use a smaller crane to lay the pieces in place, because in between, Goliath, when they put the pylons in, they had to put some of the piles closer, so they could get their, their mini ax up there to, to put them in the water. Those mini axes weigh three thousand pounds, and so there, if they can hold that, they'll hold anything, and so we were able to split the middle portion in half. Instead of having a fifty-foot section, we have two twenty-five, so we can use smaller cranes. And so, it's just all these little minor changes that makes things easier for.
But your, your, your confident progress is being made, I guess.
Yeah, I guess I should have just stuck right down to the, yes. I feel good about it, it's just that we're, he's, he's got demands from his other clients as well, and so it's just a juggling act, and so I feel very good about what he's done. I really do, and we're very confident. It's just, it's just time consuming. And everything like that, so, yeah, we're, we're in good shape. It's just slow. And I'm not a patient person.
Anything else?
Motion, we adjourn?
Motion by Brandon. Second by Greg. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, guys. Uh, Greg Pierce.
Think Greg, not as cool Greg.